Peter, you're very timely today.
Yeah, I know. Nothing else to do, yeah?
Yeah. Wouldn't want to be outside.
Yeah, really, God forbid, after the weekend, after the beautiful weekend we had.
Yeah.
Hi.
You're back.
Hi.
I know.
So you all can hear me, right?
Yes, perfectly.
Okay, good. I've had trouble with my sound in the past, so.
I'm missing your old background, though.
Oh, which background is that?
One that looked like you were in Spain at a parador, you know, with all the, it looked like my jolica or something.
Oh, I love that one.
Good one.
Did anything happen at the FinCon meeting that I should know about?
No. We talked about, I mean, nothing that you hadn't heard before.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, always, Sarah, you know, the most fascinating meeting, committee meetings.
I do know that, and I've probably been there, but.
Sarah, I'm going to be jumping off at 2:25, and Stephen will take over his chair of FinCon from there.
Okay, if we're even still going at 2:25.
Yes, ma'am. I thought the FinCon meeting was going to last 15 minutes, so I was wrong about that, so I'm not predicting anymore.
You just never know.
You never know.
I guess the 10 people showed up a day early, had some consternation, sorry about that.
They did.
Well, I'm looking at weather.com, and it's 18% rain on Saturday, so that's okay.
That's pretty good, right?
Yeah, 63 and 56, also pleasant.
Yeah, what kind of wind?
Okay, 17 miles an hour, southwest.
So it could get a little nippy.
Yeah.
Under the tent, in the shade.
As long as it wasn't like last weekend.
I know. Okay, so it's 2 o'clock. Is there anyone that we know that we're waiting for, that I should wait for?
Dawn. We think dawn.
All right, I'll give it another, give it another minute.
We don't have a quorum yet on Finance Committee, so. I'm not sure we're going to have a quorum.
That's okay, I don't know that you're going to need one, so.
Well, if we do have one, I'll have to call it to order, but if we don't have one, then we can just carry on.
Right.
And now my dogs are deciding to, they've just made the quorum for us.
Okay, well, I'm going to get started. This is the moderator's pre-town meeting conference. The purpose of this meeting is to just run through the warrant, identify any last-minute issues that we're aware of, flush out any amendments, I don't know, so anything you know that you think I need to know, please chime in.
Sarah, we're now at quorum, so I have to call, getting to order.
Great.
Done.
All right. So we're going to start with the sense of the meeting request, small mesh fishing gear. Then we have Article 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, now 8, the town is going to call, as well as 10. And then we're going to have a motion from the Finance Committee to take the following articles out of order. 90, 38, 8, 10, and 97.
Correct.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, but I do that after you've gone through all.
After I go through everything.
Okay, just checking, thank you.
And, and I have that order correct now, right? It's 90, 38, 8, 10, and then 97 at the end.
Correct, Sarah.
Okay. All right. And if there are any technical amendments, would you just shove them out, because I, I didn't, I don't have that, that last most updated thing with me.
Sarah, there's a technical amendment on 8, but I think we might have mentioned that to you yesterday.
You did, yep. Okay. So 9, what's the other technical amendment you had?
Article 16.
Article 60?
16.
Oh, 16, okay. And then the Planning Board had one that we'll get to, okay. 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, we have a technical amendment. 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29. Okay, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36. Andy Wall is going to call that, and I have a motion to give to him for that. 37. We talked about 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, 47.
Sarah, 46. Is the technical amendment about the year?
Oh, right, okay, thank you. Right, 47, 48, 49, 50, 51, 52, 53, 54, I saw a handout this morning from Mr. Von Kampen. 55, and I think I have one coming from the riders as well. 55 or 56, do you think?
It's 55.
Okay.
56 has a no, 56 is the no.
Okay. All right.
Yep, Sarah, just on that, we're hearing some Montemoy people who are chatting about these articles that we hadn't heard from.
Right. Which, which article in particular, the Von Kampen one, or the Rider one, or both?
Both, Von Kampen and Rider.
Okay. All right, so those are likely to be called, is what you're indicating, yeah, okay. All right, I think there was a third one that Linda Williams mentioned, but I, I can't remember which one it is, but.
I, I think on that one she wanted a handout for 54.
Yeah.
Talking about something else.
Yeah, no, she said she, she gave me a handout, and then she said, I'm also working with Rider and.
I'm, I'm led to believe that she's going to call 57.
Okay.
And also 60.
Okay.
You want to wait till we get to 60 to me, for me to talk about that, or?
Yep, she said, she said, I'm also putting in a few others, Ryder and Schreiber. So, yeah, mention them when we get there.
60 is Schreiber.
Okay, so 57, 58, 59, 60.
So 60, she intends to introduce a new motion to rezone a portion of that property. So she intends to have a motion and a math.
Oh.
So.
Okay. All right, I mean, I, I I just hope there are enough copies for everyone, and I just, I'm worried about how this is going to go, but we'll see, I guess we'll see. Um, 61, 62, 63, 64, 65, and 66, Mr. Wall, it's going to be Andy Wall, that is, I have motions for him. 67, 68.
Sarah, on 67 and 68, I'm led to believe from a conversation with Ellen Ray that McGrady intends to call those.
Okay.
There is at least of the fam, or the individuals that own on the corner of Prospect Atlantic, I can't remember their name offhand, but I'll send you their email, they wanted to speak in favor of the negative motion, so.
Okay. All right.
So, so they would be speaking against McGrady, they wanted to be recognized, I will send you their email.
All right, so then I have a question for John Georgia, then. If somebody calls 67 and 68, and they want to make a positive motion, is it going to be sufficient for them to say, move to adopt the subject matter of Articles 67 and 68?
As printed in the warrant.
As printed in the warrant, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me just double-check on that.
Okay, yeah, 67 is to prohibit construction of a rotary, and 68 is to transfer care, custody, and management from the Selectment to the School Committee.
So 67, Sarah?
Yeah.
I don't think is, is binding legally.
Right.
It's a non-binding directive sense of the meeting.
Okay. All right.
Not in the form of a bylaw.
And how about 68?
I know, that's, that's binding.
Okay.
And that will take a that will take a 2/3 vote if it's a positive motion.
68?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, does that, that didn't make it into the.
No, because the Finance Committee motion isn't to take no action.
Oh, I see, I see, got you. Oh, and just so everyone knows, it's been determined that none of our zoning articles are going to fall under the majority vote, everything's 2/3. Correct? That was what Judge Cutler determined.
Yep.
All right. 69, I haven't heard from Teresa Williams, but it wouldn't surprise me if she wants to go forward again in 69. I didn't we do something like a referral to a committee last time?
Government Study Committee was the discussion, that it should come out of that, that candidate Cliff did mention his sister's article, so maybe he's going to call it.
All right, okay. All right, well, we'll see. Um, 70?
Sarah, I'm sorry, on 69?
Yeah.
So, um, this again is not in the form of a charter amendment or a bylaw.
Right.
It's not binding.
Right.
I think we've said that all along.
Yeah, I think, I think we have too. I think this is, is year three for this one, I think. I would love to find a way to do something that would resolve the concern.
Sarah?
Yeah.
I have a question on Article 68, I'm sorry if we could go back to that.
Yeah.
The article says to see if the town will vote to transfer the care, custody, manage, and control the parcel currently held by the Board of Selectmen back to the School Committee.
Yeah.
The Board of Selectmen doesn't hold that parcel.
Oh, who holds it?
The School Committee.
Oh, the School Committee currently holds it?
Yes.
Oh, so we don't, so it's already done?
There is authority for the School Committee to transfer it to the town, but that hasn't been accomplished yet.
Okay. Okay, I, I mean, I, and I would think to rescind that authorization would be outside the scope of this particular article.
So I would just think the article is faulty, period.
Okay. Well, it doesn't sound like it's necessary, if it's already in the care and custody of the School Committee, it's right where he feels it should be. Okay. Um, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75.
Sarah, on, on 75, someone asked me a question about that yesterday, and I looked over it, and I believe the wrong section of the town code is referenced in the Finance Committee motion. I think it should be Chapter 124A, and it references 125A.
Um, can we ask the Finance Committee to do a technical amendment on that? If that's, if that's the case?
Brian, you can add it to our list for Saturday morning.
We will note that, manager.
Thank you.
Okay, so everywhere here it says 125A, it's supposed to be something else?
Um, you know, just hold on one second, Sarah.
Sure.
Because I believe this may be a result of the town code not being fully updated.
Oh.
From prior votes of town meeting.
Okay.
I do believe 125A is the correct reference.
Okay.
Just isn't showing up in the town code as such.
Oh.
Oh.
I, I will double, I can go back and double-check that.
If you could, that would be really helpful.
Yep.
Thank you, John, and then if you let Brian know in case we need to do a technical.
I'll send an email around.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, that's really, that would be super helpful. Okay. So, and just so everyone knows, Bruce Mandel does not intend to call this. And we had a correspondence with the Stop &amp; Shop, and they seemed satisfied with the Finance Committee recommendation. So I think, I think we should be fine on 75. Doesn't mean someone else won't call it, but at the moment, I think we're fine. 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 86. You know, I'm just remembering that I had an email, I think, from Kevin Dale. I think he wanted to withdraw an article, and I told him that he couldn't, so it must have gotten him it must have gotten a negative recommendation. All right, well, I'm not going to worry about it. I'm thinking it's one of these, though, I think it's maybe 85. Anyway, 85, 86, 87, 88, 89, 90, 91, 92, 93, 94, 95, 96, 97, I should have mentioned 90 and 97 were, are going to be the subject of the motion to take out of order, and I am just going to require a majority vote on that motion. I don't think it qualifies for that jockeying for position issue. 98, 99, 100, 101, 102, 103, 104, 105, 106, 107, 108, 109, 110, 111, and 112. Stephen?
Yeah, a question on Article 48, the swimming pool article. Oh, never mind, I see the Planning Board motion, I just saw that there was a Planning Board comment and a Finance Committee comment, but I missed the motion, so that is what will get voted in if the, if it's not called, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, there is some motion on Article 90 now that's floating around, I know Kurt Barnes wants to make an amendment to just flat-out exempt residents from the effect of 90 entirely.
Do you have that in writing, Sarah?
From Kurt?
Yes.
I just have an email from him, I ha, I haven't given him any language for it or anything.
That could be a little bit complicated in terms of the wording.
I know.
Because we would have to go through and make sure every reference to non-resident then, or to resident is stricken from the bylaw. Because you don't want it to say in one part that residents are not subject to the bylaw, but then have provisions throughout the bylaw that references residents.
I know, do you think um, it would be sufficient to say something like, notwithstanding anything here into the contrary, the provisions of whatever this section is, will not apply to.
I really don't like that.
No, I don't like it either.
I mean, this is the, this is the local legislation of the town.
I know. Um, all right, well, what, what would you like me to tell Curtis?
Would you like me to try to draft something up, but then, then again, you know, it may be a multiple situation where we'd have to have copies provided for everyone to see.
Right, I think that's going to be a problem, I mean, I can give back to him. It's a little confusing what he sent me, because what he sent me says, "In the event that Article 90 passes in any way, shape, or form, I hereby submit the following amendment. Nantucket residents shall be exempt from the provisions of this article. If Article 90 does not pass, the amendment will not be required." But he can't wait to see if it passes or not, because once it passes, it passes, and then there's no opportunity to amend.
Do you want to send me his email?
Sure.
And did you want me to try to draft something to accomplish his intent?
Well, maybe what I should do, John, is maybe I should email him and say, "Would you copy? This is what you're going to have to do, and you're going to have to provide." we're willing to give you some language, but you're going to have to provide multiple copies." And maybe he's not going to want to do that.
Okay.
And I'll give, I'll give him what I've now gotten from the Act Now people, which is their motion. And maybe that will, it probably won't be sufficient, but maybe it will be. Because they've exempted residents from some of it, but not everything, right?
Right. And in any event, it's that motion that these, any changes should be made, right?
Correct.
Because we don't want to have dueling amendments.
No, we do not. No, it would have to be.
The bylaw.
It would have to be the Tobias wouldn't.
Substitute, I'm calling it a substitute main motion, but.
Yes. Yes, exactly.
Sarah, did we get any information from him about the building commissioner reference? In the Tobias substitute motion?
No. No, that just.
Is it possible that's just a legacy left over from the original version of their bylaw?
Yes.
Remember that there was quite a robust role for the building commissioner when the petition was first filed. And I'm wondering if that isn't simply a legacy from that prior version.
I, I think that's extremely possible.
And that it should be the Board of Health, right?
Right.
Yeah. So can we suggest to them that they eliminate that? Building Commissioner Reference?
Yes, I think someone did that yesterday, didn't they?
Would be good. Thank you.
I emailed them and said, "Why is that in there?" And never heard back. Um, I will ask them. You know what's going to happen? It's going to get so confusing that nobody's going to know what they're voting on. But particularly if they've already made their 500 copies of whatever they've sent me. I don't know. Okay. Anything, is there anything else?
Sarah, can I just confirm that the articles that are going to have technical amendments are eight, 16, and 46?
That's all we know about at the moment.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it for the moment.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So, so on my little to-do list here, I've got to get in touch with Kurt. And I'll get in touch with Julia, Julia Linder about that. All right. Is there anyone else you want me to reach out to or not reach out to or?
I was going to say if they made their 500 copies, which they probably did, since, you know, it wouldn't be a big deal to make 500 more copies between.
No, it's true.
Now and the weekend.
Right. They could also go through and handwrite in.
Yeah.
No, I just feel bad. I feel bad about all the trees and the.
Sarah, I don't know if you can see that Brooke Moore has her hand up.
I can't. But Brooke?
Hi, thank you. Actually, thanks, Stephen. I just want to confirm this, the order of the articles motion that's going to come forward. So at the time we arrive at eight and 10, there will be a motion to reorder. So we'll go from seven.
Actually, what's going to happen, Brooke, is I'm going to call the articles. Once we know what articles have been called, the finance committee is going to make a motion to take these articles out of order. So when we, if that motion passes, we will start with 90. We'll go to 38, then eight, then 10, then 97.
So at the very beginning then, first, right at the top. Okay.
Yeah.
After, just for my clarification, after we call everyone in order, right?
After we call them all and we know what's called and what isn't called.
Okay, so this is my first time at the rodeo as an article sponsor, so I have one other, couple other quick questions.
Sure.
So you already have my positive motion, right? So that means that it's going to be called, correct?
Yeah.
So by pre, letting you know in advance. Okay. And then the other question I have is, as the sponsor for the article, how much time do I have to speak about the article?
Um, five to seven minutes, but keep it as close to five as you can.
Of course. Okay, thank you. That's all I needed to know. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Sarah?
Yeah.
Been talking, I've looked through Article 90. And I think that Mr. Barnes's intent is captured in this substitute main motion. I, I don't, I don't think there's any need for him to make another amendment.
Okay.
If his intent is to essentially exempt resident short-term renters from the provisions of this bylaw.
Okay, the concern that somebody raised, and let me see if I can articulate this, is that what the amendment is doing is saying that if you have one property that you own and it's your primary residence, you're not limited on the short-term rentals that you can make of that property. But if you're a Nantucket resident who owns multiple properties, the properties that are not your primary residence would still be subject to this bylaw?
Yes.
And I think it's Curtis's, although I could be putting words in his mouth, I thought it was his intent to exempt properties owned by year-round, all properties owned by year-round residents, not just the primary residences of year-round residents.
Sarah, can I ask you a question?
More.
Um, I might have misunderstood something, but I thought we were going through the normal, the way that I understood it, we're going through the normal call of the articles, then we're going to have the motion on those. Then I thought that we were going to deal with any called articles with the exception of eight and 10 between Articles 1 and 33.
Oh.
In other words, if Article, say, 15 was called, that would be taken before we took the, the motion for the articles to go out of order.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Well, I thought that's, I thought that was with the email chain that we, we had with.
We were talking about that, but then I thought it got superseded by yeah, by the conversation about taking eight and 10. That was before we were taking eight and 10 out of order? Wouldn't we do like one through 24 and then we were going to do 90, 38, and 97? But once eight and 10 got into the mix.
Okay.
I, I don't know. I'm happy that I do whatever motion you all want to do.
Kind of like me, you know?
We'll definitely, before we start with whatever the first article is, we'll definitely vote on all the uncalled articles. You definitely want me to do that?
Right.
Okay.
My, my expectation is, and I think it's Article 15, which is the enterprise fund budgets will most likely be called because it has the override.
Okay.
And I suspect that I, I don't know for certain that it will be called, but I um, okay, so I guess we're, so we would take 90, 38, eight, 10, 97, and then go back to 50, to the articles between one and 33 that were called?
Right.
Okay.
But if it's important to do 15, you could make the motion so that it was 15, 90, 38, eight, 10, and 97.
Wow, it's getting a bit more complicated than I expected. Okay, I'll probably defer to the town manager on what that appropriate pieces there, to be honest with you. I okay. Thank you.
All right. Um, maybe we'll get lucky and it won't get called. People will just vote at the ballot. Or maybe you want it called to have the discussion. I don't know.
And Sarah, I'm going to retract what I said about Mr. Barnes's amendment.
Okay.
It's going to be very complicated. Because, for example, the two-person capacity limit per bedroom applies to all short-term rentals, not just non-resident, as does the one parking space. And the registration requirements apply to all short, short-term rentals. So, um, I don't really understand his intent, but we're going to have to get clarification from him. What it, if all he wants to do is not have any minimum number of nights required or um, a maximum of 45. In other words, the maximum and minimum lengths. If, if that's all he's concerned with, I don't think he has to make an amendment based upon the substitute main motion. But there are other provisions of this bylaw that do apply, whether it's resident or non-resident.
So that give me an example of one that applies. Two-person.
Occupancy within a short-term rental shall be limited to two people per bedroom. Seven, a short-term renter shall be limited to parking one vehicle per short-term rental.
Okay.
And then also the registration permitting inspection and fees apply to both resident and non-resident short-term rentals.
Okay. All right. All right. Well, so if this passes, how does it get enforced?
Well, I, I could give you the glib answer. It is enforced, as is any other bylaw, through the enforcement sections, but
Right.
Probably the question is, how will the town administer this by?
Yeah, that's really what I'm asking.
And given the comprehensive nature of the registration and inspection requirements, I think it's going to take not an insubstantial amount of resources to actually administer this bylaw.
Right.
And the bylaw takes effect on October 1st, 2021, assuming the Attorney General has approved it by then. And there is no administrative structure in place that I'm aware of and no appropriation to be able to enforce this bylaw.
Okay.
And even if you went to next year and added it into the operating budget funded from raise and appropriate, you couldn't spend that money until next July 1st of 2022.
Right.
And then you're, so I doubt it's going to be enforceable or properly administered during the 2022 season just but because of the timing of the appropriation.
Right. Okay.
Has the Board of Health taken any position on this?
Not that I'm aware of. I'm not aware of any position. Okay. Well, I only ask because I have a feeling it will come up. Okay. All right. Well, I guess, I guess we're ready. Anything comes up that you think I need to know about, please let me know between now and then. Weather, whatever. All right. Well, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
9:00 AM.
Thanks, Sarah.